Evening, everyone. Thank you for those of us joining, those of you joining in person. Michelle, do we have Zoom up here?
We do.
I don't see anyone, but thank you for joining on Zoom. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next Board of Education meeting is on Monday, June 12th at 7:30 PM in the Darian High School auditorium. I don't have any real comments. We have some exciting things on the agenda tonight, which you'll hear about shortly. I do want to say I have no idea where the year went. It's hard to believe that Memorial Day is right in front of us. I know there are a lot of fun things going on from an end of school thing, all these outdoor days and all that fun stuff at the elementary schools. Our graduation is set. Dr. Adley has guaranteed a perfect sunny mild day for our graduation. And it was the middle sex, middle school stepping up ceremony, our graduation is in place too. So a lot of good stuff going on, another pack fill end of school year, and it's been a busy year all around. But it's exciting, I think, for the students and for some of us to have the summer ahead of us. So that's exciting, but I wish everyone a happy, safe, and some restful Memorial Day weekend ahead of you. So with that, I will move over, Michelle, to public.
May I make a motion to amend the agenda to adjust the fiscal year 2024 operating budget?
Yes, may I have a second on that motion? Mr. Seeny, all those in favor? That is unanimous with everyone here. Thank you, Sarah. With that, I will move over to public comment. Michelle?
Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate in public comment, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I would like, yes, I would like to speak tonight.
Time out, time out. Thank you. Anyone in the audience? All right, Michelle, we'll move over to Zoom. Do we have any pictures this evening?
We're working on that. If anyone on Zoom would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon. Ms. Luz Bueno, you are unmuted and recognized.
Yes, I would like to participate.
Go ahead, please. Thank you.
I would like to bring to the attention a pretty critical problem that I encountered last week when I asked the school for help on resolving an unfair situation that was causing a lot of stress to my daughter. Nothing out of the ordinary, high school stuff. I spoke with the Assistant Superintendent who promised to try to find a solution with the music department. When I arrived to the music practice, I was approached by Ms. Colleen Thompson. We had a tense exchange as I didn't agree with her decision. And up to this point, it was still regular stuff, high school stuff. But this is when the situation turned very disturbing. Ms. Thompson suggested my daughter's stress was because of me, because what she called my mental health problems. And she proceeded to inform me that, quote unquote, "in central office," everyone was discussing again what she called my mental health. As I haven't had any mental health problems or incidents, the only thing I can think is that she was referring to the way I speak, my outspoken nature, maybe the way I dress. Could it be possibly my ethnicity? I have to say, I walk away in shock, my heart beating fast, embarrassed, ashamed, humiliated, with a million confusing thoughts rushing through my mind, frankly trying to hold the tears from covering my face. While I reminded myself I had to keep myself together for the performance. Since this is not the first time I hear about parents being automatically blamed if they bring up to the school their kids' emotional difficulties because of school actions. This was a simple one. It was over an hour later. But what happened when it's not like that? When a parent bring a harder emotional situation to the school and the staff goes into attack mode, like Ms. Thompson did? What happened if I had been someone actually struggling with mental health? Learning everyone is talking about me? Could that be what put me over the edge? Is this the culture that Mr. Adley has created and what has caused several mothers of teens and teen majors from middle school to kill themselves a few years back? Is this culture of weaponizing mental health to blame for last year's tragedies? I want this board to open an investigation. Who was Ms. Thompson speculating with in Mr. Adley's office about my mental health? Have you speculated about my mental health, Mr. Adley? And if so, with what qualifications? Because it is under your watch that all the tragedies have happened.
Ms. Bueno, your time is up.
I want a strict policy, I'm sorry, my three minutes. I want a strict policy to be created. If there is a concern about a parent's mental health, it has to be referred to a specialty.
Your time is up, Ms. Bueno. Thank you.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Move on to Dr. Adley, the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you to those of you who are online and also to our, a lot of our special guests, staff, and other special guests who are joining us this evening. You're very welcome. I extend a warm welcome here to you, to the board meeting. As the board chair said, I thank you to all of the staff and the community members, and particularly our students, for all the celebrations and bands and chorus concerts, orchestra concerts, and all of the experiences that are occurring at this particular point. We had a wonderful wee event last night, the ninth grade achievers night, and one wonderful, different project were put on display by our young people. It's just the thinking, the quality of some of these things are truly amazing. I also don't want to forget that since the last time we were here, we had a prom. John, you danced the night away, you had a good time? Didn't get in your way? But again, thanks to everybody who made that possible. And also a special word of thanks for our parents for the inaugural safe after, after graduation party. I think that was well received. And John, you can certainly maybe comment on that as we go along. The middle school quiz bowl, our Nationals, they placed fourth. We sent four teams and we were the only school to actually send four teams. I also want to recognize the Darian High School. They will be, only dedicated people would do this over Memorial Day. They are going to Atlanta for, for the Nationals, for the quiz bowl. So thank you to Don Record and the staff there, also for Barbara and Cam at the middle school for all of their efforts to support our students in this capacity. This Connecticut Colt essay contest, that is a word language contest, essay contest. And I'm pleased just to say that Esther Sui-Jau was the winner from the high school and we can offer her congratulations. That was from hundreds of people from all over the state of Connecticut. So congratulations to Esther on that award. Want to thank everybody who contributed to the communication survey that has been up and running for a couple of weeks. The staff one is out and it will close on Thursday, but today we closed the parent one if, one or two people felt as if they, for some reason couldn't get in, given your device or otherwise, you can still contact us. We won't shut you out completely in that regard. We made a final adjustment, but the numbers are probably close to 400 at this particular point, I think. I'm looking at margin and Mr. Tramberger, they're around about that, I think. So we had a nice return. So the communications committee will discuss that. That was originally scheduled for March 26th. I think Ms. Best will be rescheduling that to July 1st. Want to congratulate the high school, the New England, or June, sorry. What did I say, July?
And March.
John, I didn't, I didn't get away with it. I told you it would be tonight. The NIAS accreditation, New England schools and colleges, high schools are accredited every, every 10 years. We just received back a letter from NIAS, the high school, in terms of the commendations and recommendations that they will continue to work on from the accreditation visiting committee. That was very well received. The high school administration will come back and do a presentation on, on the status of that. Just a reminder that the visit, the decennial visit isn't until October 2024. So that's, the high school has an opportunity to work on those recommendations. So that will come before the board. I just also want to, just another reminder, I've mentioned this once before, the tri-state, for which we're a member. The tri-state will do a visit to the high school on January 31st through February. And this will focus on the arts and supporting the arts and advancing the arts. So that, that visit will be being planned for. Graduations, everybody in town probably knows when the graduations are. The moving up ceremonies are underway. Middle sex is June 13th at 5:00. The high school is 14th at 5:00 o'clock. And we look forward also to the Fitch graduation, the 13th. I did become aware just earlier today that the recommendations, draft recommendations for the DEI report were posted on a parent website, which, which is, it's not fine, but okay. But I would just ask people to let that play out. We've been very upfront about the process. We've been very upfront about the timelines. There are certain inaccuracies in there. We're certainly not changing criteria for marginalized groups. That is not correct. This, this board, this committee has been very clear in our efforts to expand opportunities for inclusiveness in talent and gifted programs. And, and so we'll do that and we'll bring those recommendations forward. And so I would just ask you, if you've, if you've become aware of that, if you just let the process play out, as the board knows it's going to play out in terms of we're bringing back the recommendations, the approved recommendations at the next board meeting. And Thursday's the curriculum committee meeting, and we'll be talking about department chairs at that. Thereafter, the 26th has been rescheduled to June 1st. And the next curriculum committee meeting is in June 8th, closely followed by the policy on the 9th. And then the meetings roll into summer. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll move over to student representative reports. John Swaha?
Sorry for being late. I was stuck in some traffic.
Is that, is that on?
I think so.
No, it's all right. You're here.
So for the past week, our seniors have been on their internships. So it started like last Monday. And Darren High School Music Department has had a successful spring concert series in May. And last Tuesday, the Darren High School hosted their annual art show. So we had everything from ceramics to 2D art displayed in the cafeteria. And the Tri-M Music Honors Society is currently holding its senior recital.
Great. Thank you.
Currently, as in, it is currently ongoing. Additionally, the Theater 308 student production is this weekend. Yes, it is Memorial Day weekend. Please see the website for opportunities to buy tickets. There are limited tickets. The DHS scholarship and award ceremonies are this Thursday evening. And additionally, the Muafitha National Honor Society induction is on the 1st of next month. More information to come about the end of the year on the board meeting. That's right in the week of graduation, but for now, that's all.
Voice across FCS. I don't know the exact, I think the boys are, voice across FCS, trying to head to FCS this weekend.
So I'll add, I'll add a personal note, not that we want to make it personal, but I think it's important in what we do and how we do it in this district. But I have a daughter that's gone through the entire school system and the special ed program. She's a senior. She will be graduating in June and she is doing a summer internship because she wanted to do a summer internship because her sisters did summer internships. And thanks to the team and the special ed team, she's doing a summer internship with one of her original teachers in a kindergarten class at Ox Ridge where she started school. And I've never seen anyone more energized to go to school in the morning. And it also cost me a new wardrobe. Thank God from Target, because that's what she's all about. But my hat's off to this young lady and her ability to participate in the internship program. Senior internship, not summer. Well, if you want to keep her for the summer, I'm fine with that. That would be a big help. Oh, thank you.
She can keep mine, too.
There we go. All right. Let's go around the table.
Thank you. I was just going to follow up and add, I just got word that girls varsity tennis won FCS about 15 minutes ago.
Good stuff. Thank you, Swaha, and thank you, John. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the following? The minutes of the special meeting held on May 9th, 2023. The minutes of the regular meeting held on May 9th, 2023. And the minutes of the special meeting held on May 15th, 2023. May I have a motion? Dennis, second by Julie, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We will move on to board committee reports. John?
Last Thursday, the finance committee meeting had a three minute and 46 second meeting. It was a quick one, but we ran through, updated the current year surplus, which Rich is going to talk about.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Curriculum committee, as Alan said, is meeting Thursday morning to talk about department shares. The materials were sent out this afternoon. If anybody reads through them and has questions, please send them my way.
Great. Got a meeting coming up, Dave, or we got something scheduled?
Okay, thank you.
I'll report in next time.
All right. Good, good. Very good. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. So we will kick it off under presentations and discussions with the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. So I am excited. I will turn it over to Alan shortly. Myself and Jill and Sarah and a team was put together and it was a great process. You know, a lot of applications, a lot of interviews, and I'm excited by Dr. Amy Fedigan being here this evening with her family. I met her family on the way in. I apologize, I think Brendan, your husband, then I got Liam, Seamus, Terry, and a missing one. Nora. So as I said, as they came through the door, I feel like I'm in Westport County, Maia with all my cousins. As you walked in the door, it felt really good with all those names. So Dr. Fedigan is coming to us from being the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning in the Milford Public Schools, pre-K through 12. And we're excited to have her here this evening. But with that, I will turn it over briefly to Dr. Adley.
Yeah, I'm delighted to welcome Dr. Fedigan and her, members of her family. And Amy comes to us with a wealth of experience, a wealth of teaching experience. She's a residing Assistant Superintendent. As you know, she's a highly respected Assistant Superintendent in the area. We're delighted to have her. All of them wearing green for the board chair, myself. We'll take the blue because that's the next appropriate thing. So with that, I'm going to offer her our congratulations and the board will probably go through the voting process, I think.
Go through the motion and then give you a minute at the podium if you'd like. So may I have a motion to appoint Dr. Amy L. Fedigan as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction? I have a motion, second by John Seeny, all those in favor? That is Seeny Best, Ublen Maroney, McCammon, Deneen Parent. Any against? Any abstentions? Brown and Worm on the abstentions. We're glad to have you here and we so appreciate you bringing your family. It speaks volumes, again, of you and the process that you've been through and having your family here is important. We're very, we are a family here at the district and all our elementary schools. So welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this really warm welcome. If I could just have a moment of privilege, Mr. Board Chair?
Yes, please.
And Dr. Adley. I just want to express to everybody here that sits on the Board of Ed and certainly the folks watching and those in the room, how very thankful I am for this opportunity and how honored I am to have been selected as the Assistant Superintendent for Darian Public Schools. I am very confident that the district values are in line with my values as an educator and as a parent of four young children. You can keep mine in the summer, too, if that's still on the table. I'm, I've just been really impressed throughout this process. I know when I begin my work here, I will be very inspired with my work when I, when I meet all of the students. I know that they'll be inspiring as well as, I'm sure, the talented staff of teachers and administrators. I can't wait to get going with them. I'm certainly eager to begin working alongside Dr. Adley and working in partnership. I know he's going to be a tremendous coach. I'm looking forward to working with the Board of Education, teaching staff, the administrative staff, and all of the community stakeholders. And I just can't wait to join the blue wave. So thank you all for the warm welcome and I can't wait to get started.
Thank you. The only thing I'm nervous about is potential competition between the two of you on St. Patrick's Day. See if you can outdo the bagpipe.
Have I have my information right? I may have a bagpipe sitting right beside her.
Oh.
So we, so we could, we, we could, we could find a, we could find a role there.
Good, thank you.
Amy, if you would like to stay for the next announcement, other than that, I would use your family as a reason to your...
I would go to one of our fine eating establishments in Darian and celebrate. Thank you. Appreciate it. We look forward to it. Enjoy you and your family. Please enjoy the Memorial Day weekend. Thank you. Great. We'll move on to more exciting news, the appointment of the Royal School Principal. We have Natasha Torre with us in the audience. Welcome. Good to see you. Natasha's been part of the district I've got here since August of 2006. Am I correct? Good, good. Excellent. Been at Holmes and been at Royal and been the interim principal at Royal. So we're excited to have you here. Thank you for going for the process. Thanks for all you've done over the last year for our students at Royal. We're excited about that. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Adley.
Congratulations to Natasha Torre. It's wonderful. I see a lot of staff here, here and I'm assuming in support of you. And it's wonderful to have one of her own, because Natasha is one of her own, come up through their, come up through the ranks. And Natasha has an expertise particularly in teaching and learning. She'll provide that continuity. So she'll provide continuity, everything from teaching to learning, right through the building projects. But we're delighted for you this evening. We're delighted for our, our staff, we're delighted for the kids and our Royal community. So thank you and congratulations to you.
And even with the major renovation headed your way for your school, you're willing to take this on? Looks like you've got a lot of support to help you. So congratulations. May I have a motion to appoint Natasha L. Torre as principal of Royal Elementary School? Katie, second by Julie, all those in favor? Seeny Best, Ublen Maroney, McCammon, Deneen Parent. All those against? All those abstaining? Abstaining, Mr. Brown?
I was against.
You're against?
I was against, yeah.
Mr. Mrs. Worm?
Right.
Abstaining, Mr. Brown. All right, thank you. We will move forward.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Ed, Dr. Adley, and the Cabinet for appointing me to the Royal Principal position. I am thrilled and thankful to be able to continue in this role and move forward with the work that we have begun together this year. Royal is an amazing place with amazing faculty, staff, students, and families, which is evidenced tonight. I am grateful for and confident in my Royal team and know that we will continue to work together as a community to support our students and each other. And I look forward to sharing our Royal successes with all of you in the near future. So thank you.
Always great to have a stamp club, right? That's excellent. Good stuff.
This is definitely your cue to get out, right?
Go have dinner with your family, go to 1020 and celebrate. Thank you all for coming. Safe home, everyone. And then, and then there were three. Michelle, how many folks do we have on Zoom?
Seventeen.
We will move on to the first reading and discussion of the proposed 2024-2025 school district calendar. Dr. Adley?
I think it's the, Mr. Chairman, I may have missed what you stepped out. We're talking about 23, 24 calendar?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Twenty, twenty, yes, 23, 24.
So this is before the board. This isn't ordinarily coming before the board like this, but I wanted to flag because it changes the start of school for our families. This particular calendar for next year incorporates agreements from the contract, from the DEA contract that was negotiated. So next year is the first year, July 1st is the first year that that kicks in. There were things within that contract. Some of those included some of the items negotiated by the board, which was an extra professional development day for the staff in place of the, the workday that they have at the end of the year. And also another additional day for our new teachers. So we traditionally had two days for new teachers. This, this provides us with another one. So you'll see that this sort of pushes the calendar right. What does it really mean? It really means a change in the start, in the start date and end date for the calendar. So the graduation will be the 12th, which ordinarily would have been the 10th. The student's return date is now the 30th, or where it was going to be the 29th. That's, that's, that's the short version. It pushes it out one day to the 30th, the start of school. Actually, to be honest with you, I'll say that I don't think that's a bad thing, because I think families in general and our students appreciate a little bit of a transition back in. People tend to be wiped out and it's a, it's not a bad, actually, I think most people would generally like it the way it falls. So first day of school for students will be the 30th. We, again, we put the extra professional development day that was gained through contractual negotiations with the board. The agreement was to put that at the start of the year, which is actually helpful, because that's most helpful and less disruptive to families throughout the year. So it's really with that adjustment, it starts, it pushes out the start of the year and it sort of pushes out the graduation to the date. It was really just to flag this for parents, because some parents will be working on a different schedule. If people had pre-purchased something or otherwise, we would honor those, those things, but...
Thank you. I just had a question about the additional PLC day in May, because that'll be during APs typically.
Yeah, so, so then the accreditation, the accreditation letter that we just got back, it will, it will imply that we'll have to have a different day. We may have to adjust a couple of PLC days down the stretch or a wee bit before the stretch. Once it comes clear if we need another one or another few, or if there's one that falls on a particular day right there, we will make sure that the communication for that bus and everything else will be appropriate if that's the case.
I just wanted to ask if it had been considered about building in snow days, recognizing that the year that we had this year doesn't seem so vital. But changing that end date graduations, you know, summer camps, plans beyond the school date can, can really be very tricky. So I was just curious if that might be something on the table for the future.
Well, we sort of, we sort of build, well, they're indirectly built in. They're just added at the end of the school year, right up to five snow days. So that's basically what we do because of the 185 days plus five days. That's typically what we would do. We wouldn't go beyond that. So it's just sort of built in that we would add it at the end of the school year. I don't know if I'm asking your question specifically.
I meant instead of adding on to the end of the day, building in a day so that if a snow day hadn't been used, say by April, then it would be a day off. But if there had been a snow day, then kids would go to school on that day. Just that kind of model and practice, just so that the end date was always set.
It starts to get into contractual.
Yeah. So you're saying like just building in during the school year? So if there's a snow day today, what's the suggestion? Sorry, just wasn't clear.
So the, the way that I've seen districts do it would be that there would be designated days that would be, there would not be school held if a snow day had not been used. However, if there had been a snow day that winter, then the kids would go to school that day. So essentially, they're just built in as kind of singular days off. So that way, the end date is hopefully...
Yeah, I'd have to, I'll see, have to look into some contract. I haven't, I actually haven't seen it specifically. I'd be happy to look at it, but I would also have to look at it contractually for that. It's something I can look at moving forward if it's, if it's a reasonable idea.
I understand that correctly, that would mean like, so for instance, this year, but there was no snow day, right? But if we had, some trying to follow this. So if we had built them in, our date instead of being the 14th would say be the 17th. So that we had those snow days built in, because if we had used them, if we had snow, we would be pushed to the 17th, correct? But then if there was no snow, just randomly throughout the year, we would just give them extra days off. Am I following this correctly?
It might be like you were saying, like a day in March. And is it, is it...
It might be like you were saying, like a day in March that is, that would be a three-day weekend that we would take away and then maybe one in May or something like that. Maybe if it's something you're interested in, you could find us a couple of examples and share them forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, anything you want to discuss about salt?
You can get us some examples of salt.
We lucked out, right?
I mean, you won.
Good. We will move on to first reading and discussion of the proposed.
I would approve that.
I would say possible, actually, I'm sorry. So any further discussion? May I have a motion to bear with me a second?
I do have one more question.
Go ahead, Julie.
Looking at this and looking at the proposed calendar for the next year, I just want to ask this before we close this out. It looks like we have one day of elementary parent conferences in the 23-24 calendar and the 24-25 calendar, we went back to three days of elementary.
There should be three days.
Okay, so that's not in here unless I miss it something.
It's November 28 to 30 and then March 13 to 15.
Oh, I'm looking at elementary parent conference on December 1st with a snow day of December 8th. So maybe there's four and a snow day.
There's four, yeah.
Is it 28 through the 30th?
For 20.
Yes.
So four days and then one snow day. Okay, I'm sorry. I totally misread that. Thank you very much.
Good, yeah.
You took the salt away.
May I have a motion to approve the proposed changes to the 2023-2024 School District Calendar? Dennis, second. John, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
First reading and discussion of proposed 2024-2025 School District Calendar. Dr. Adley?
So this is relatively the CM sort of format. And so this is first reading. You'll take a vote on this tonight. Again, 1920-21 of August will be the three days of new teacher orientation. And then we have an additional day in there for professional development. So it basically follows the CM format that we have followed before. It's back to the CM vacations.
So any questions or further discussion on that? It's just for discussion this evening. Move on to discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gift for Darien High School Athletic Department. Dr. Adley and Mr. Manfredoni.
Look at that.
It's out on the light, it feels.
What time is it?
On that lacrosse game. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Chris.
Sorry, I'm at a lacrosse game. It's very exciting here.
What's the score?
Wilton just scored down 7-5, 38 seconds left in the third quarter. So plenty of time.
Chris, can I ask you, just like, are you like, can you pause for a minute? Can you stop walking for a minute?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm trying to find a quiet spot. Sorry, yes.
Thank you.
I'll pause. Is that better?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
So you have there in front of you some annual donations you see from Darien Youth Lacrosse to give to both the boys and girls lacrosse programs here at Darien High School, the amount of $3,000 each that will greatly help offset the cost that both teams incur for filming, huddle, filming of games, breakdown of games. So we're asking the Board of Ed to consider and accept the gifts of $3,000 each from Darien Youth Lacrosse to both the Darien High School boys and girls lacrosse teams.
Chris, this is kind of a regular donation associated with helping with the filming costs, if I'm correct?
It is. It is an annual donation that Darien Youth Lacrosse has made to both programs in the last several years.
Great, thank you. The only thing that popped out to me is we continue to have discussions and we're just coming off a budget cycle about athletics. I guess the one concern I have is a sentence that, "For the purpose of helping the girls and boys lacrosse teams with expenses not covered by the regular school budget." I just, that kind of just doesn't sound right in terms of our budget cycle. So I think there are costs that are not normally covered through the budget cycle and there are costs that are, for this filming, that's done through fundraising normally, right? It's nothing.
Correct, right.
Nothing we've taken out of the budget that they have to fundraise for now. This has kind of been the cycle of how it works.
Correct. Each team responsible for the.
You need to be cautious in the wording.
Two.
Sure. That's good.
Good clarification.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, good. All right, Tara?
I'm just curious, do we know how much? I know this is a portion. Do we know how much it is, the total number is? And where do they get the rest of the?
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, it's probably upwards, I'd say, between $5,000 and $6,000 per team.
So then where, so where's the rest of that money coming from? More fundraising?
Two fundraising, two fundraising there by both teams. Correct.
It's fair enough to say all this recording is done fundraising.
Gotcha.
All right, good, good clarification. Anything else? Julie?
And this just offsets costs for filming for lacrosse? This isn't something that can be covering any cost for other teams? Is that correct?
Right, football does their own.
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, you can single out players. You know, honestly, probably some of the kids use it for recruiting. We discussed some of that with the theater budget that we did pass.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
Are there other teams that film besides football and lacrosse? Is this something that every team could benefit from?
There are other teams.
So a lot of teams, a lot of teams film, yes.
And they all fundraise to cover those costs, Chris?
Correct.
We don't pay for anything.
But do they all?
Do they all film with huddle?
They all use, the teams that film do use huddle, correct.
All right, may I have a motion to accept the contemplated gift for the Darien High School Athletic Department? Jill, second. Mr. Maroney, all those in favor? That is unanimous. And I will extend on behalf of the Board and the Administration, a big thank you to the Darien Youth Lacrosse Team. Much appreciated for your ongoing generosity to continue to help with costs like these associated with our team. So thank you very much. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, everybody.
We will move on to discussion and possible approval of the proposed Music Department Trip. Dr. Tranberg and Ms. Colleen Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to present for your approval a request for the Darien High School Band to travel to Nashville from March 20th to 23rd. While on the trip, the students would have several performance opportunities and will experience the music and culture of Nashville. Prior to the trip, the students will learn about the origins of blues, rock and roll, jazz, country, and other styles that stem from the region, and they will perform in these styles throughout the year. While in Nashville, the students will visit Keenridge High School and will participate in an exchange performance with the students in their concert band. These types of exchanges are not only beneficial to students musically, but it allows them to make connections and build relationships with students from different backgrounds. The students would perform at an adjudication clinic at Vanderbilt University, receive feedback and coaching from some of the top musicians and educators in the area, and they would tour the Country Music Hall of Fame, attend a performance at the Grand Old Opry House, and enjoy several other cultural experiences in the greater Nashville area. Mr. Grauer worked with academic and performance travel to put together a very detailed itinerary. He took a similar trip in the past and found that the students had a very positive experience. All students in DHS band or jazz ensembles are eligible to attend, and we expect that about 80 to 100 students will sign up based on past participation. The band puts on a very successful resale fundraiser to help offset the cost of the trip. And just logistically, how high school travel typically works for the ensembles is they go every other year. So bands traveled last year and an orchestra, I'm sorry, orchestra and chorus traveled this year, and then it's, it's the time for a band to travel if they are approved to do so this upcoming school year. So I am very enthusiastic about this opportunity for our students.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Forward questions? Yes, Dr. Adley?
Colleen, could I just confirm that I think you're trying to make an adjustment to that Wednesday, is that correct?
Yes, so we are making an adjustment so that the students can leave later in the day on Wednesday so that they wouldn't miss a full day of school. So it would, it would limit, limit it to mostly Thursday and Friday with some time off for travel on Wednesday. But we want to make sure we get that perform, that the time with the high school, which is the reason for wanting to go on a school day at least, so that we can do the exchange. But yes, that is true.
Thank you.
Sure.
Forward questions?
So would they still be able to go to the high school?
They would, yes. We would just make some adjustments to the tour schedule. We'd try to do that. We can do that on Thursday. Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the proposed Music Department Trip for March 2024? Julie, second by John, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Move on to discussion of the April 2022-2023 Financial Report. Mr. Roodel?
If you could just maybe move the slide. Oh, there we go. So this is the financial report through April. We are forecasting a positive balance of 826,544. The general education RCs are forecasting a positive balance of just over 123,000. All the special education RCs are forecasting a positive 703,000. Salaries represent a positive balance of $69,031. It is primarily through salary savings of $23,000, unused student interns of $34,000, and clubs and councils of just over $11,000. The operating accounts are slightly positive at 2765, primarily the Stanford Adult Ed Cooperative that we are a part of is $2,500 on the budget, and then we have some small savings in odd services and dues and memberships. Fixed costs are a positive 60,341. That is primarily related to health insurance of $58,064. We did flag at the Finance Committee, we did have some census changes in April that did cause that positive balance to shrink just slightly. And then revenue is a positive $694,407. It is primarily related to excess costs. Our reimbursement rate was just over 80%. We are expecting that second payment to come in anytime this week. That is 734,000 to the positive. Again, ELP tuition is down by 31, building rentals are down by 30, and then we have some small positive balances of parking fees in case of seats. There are no transfers for considerations.
Thank you, Rich. Further questions or comments from the Board on the financial report through April 2023?
We have to reconcile. John, help me with the wording with what we were talking about.
You, I was going to move, I was going to move into that next.
That would be the next, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Sarah. All right, nothing to approve here and no transfers this time, right, Rich? Okay, good. We will move on to Sarah to the motion to amend the fiscal '24 budget. So the motion is to amend the fiscal '24 operating budget to restore the Central Office Secretary position in the amount of $87,793. Summary chart describes the restore the central office reception of $87,793. Those budget dollars would come from contracting out one athletic trainer for $13,584, custodial savings due to the new salary schedule of $30,425, salary savings from budgeted affiliated salary increases of $20,302, and savings on software renewals of $15,482 for total budget reductions of $87,793. So this is FTE neutral and dollar neutral. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification for anybody who's online or anybody who may, who are still in the audience this evening, this document, you do not have it for you. It was not part of the board packet. It's subsequent to the executive session discussion. It's now entered into public record, and we will have that posted for people.
Jill?
Just for a second, Amy.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other further questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous. So thank you, everyone. Move on March. Any updates on the personnel report? Any updates on end of year hiring? Anything you want to add there?
The people, for the most part, the teachers who are leaving are moving out of the area. So the exit interviews with them have been.
Great.
You know, relatively whatever. But there are some people that will be on the next PAR, and I just want to thank the Board again. Negotiating salaries has been just that much easier because of the changes that you made, especially towards the lower end of the salary schedule to get people to come here.
It's helped from a recruiting standpoint.
Yeah.
Great, I appreciate you commenting on that. Is there anything you need? Anything we can help you with? All right, good, thank you. Michelle, we will move back over to public comment.
Good evening. Anyone in person would like to participate in public comment?
Anyone in the audience?
If anyone on Zoom would like to participate in public comment, please use the raised hand icon. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. The only thing I'd ask before we close, I would ask for the administration, the high school administration to follow up with Los Pleno from public comment early on.
Yeah, yes, I did that even, but I'll do it again.
You've done it and you'll do it again. Okay, good. Thank you for that update. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Julie, second by Dennis, all those in favor? Thank you, everyone, for joining us in person and thank you for everyone on Zoom.